So I'm not going to go through, so I will say, I don't know if I said this. So I wrote the email to you on Thursday. I didn't do that to be underhanded. I thought this was going to a different governing body. So I thought the process just started all over again. So I was not going to miss an opportunity to drive home the points because these are important points to be made. So I think a lot of, because of the time and it's getting late, I won't go over everything. But I do want to make sure that I cover a couple of things. Couple of my concerns are people who are going to be buying these homes. I think that they don't suspect that a city would permit building on homes that are part of a floodplain. So I think they're unsuspecting and they're going in quite naive. The other concern I have is for people who currently live here. Right now, as someone even testified, their houses all up and down along the creek, they currently are part of the flood risk rating of extreme. There's also Realtor.com is making the groundbreaking practice. And they say the other Realtor apps are following, that they are now publishing what the flood risk factor is for homes. There was an active listing right off of Smith Road that is now a nine point out of 10 extreme. You know, that goes into people being able to sell their homes and being able to leave. Now they're all going to be chained and bound to their homes forever because no one wants to buy a home that's in a floodplain. HUD currently has an overwhelming amount of property that resides in floodplains because banks own that property and banks can't offload the property because again, no one wants to buy a house that's in a floodplain. So I just wanted, you know, have you consider kind of the moral obligations that you have. I did print these tonight because I want everybody to understand that this is what the property looks like when it floods. And these probably aren't the most recent pictures. As Deb had testified, that the most recent process, I mean, it floods even worse than it is. This image here is right off of the Scapoose website on flooding. This is the Buxton property right here. This is JP West and that's the park. And we see it flood routinely year after year. I just think that we're dealing with people's livelihoods. We're dealing with people who don't have disposable income. And any kind of flooding impact that they have to their house, to their vehicles, they probably don't have the finances to recover from that. So I'm just pleading from a humane standpoint, I guess, consider those things.
Thank you very much. All right, now we'll move to the next part of the hearing, the rebuttal by the applicant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Do we need to take a moment to address the alleged procedural issue? Because if that is a valid thing, then it could change the way we proceed here.
So what we have noticed throughout this is that this hearing will be on the record. What the Chair of the Planning Commission explained was that legal arguments needed to be raised. The end useful term is raise it or waive it. We were asked to keep the record open for seven days with the Planning Commission. After Joel informed us that he had hired an attorney, Mr. Kovak. We actually kept it open for 10 days to allow them to fully make their legal arguments. We then gave the applicant the opportunity to rebut, because that's what you do. You know, whether you want to call it a sur reply or rebuttal. They made those points, those were given, provided to the public in advance of the hearing. So that if somebody wanted to do a further sur reply or rebuttal to the information, they could do it. We, I think that, you know, we've, this is a lot of paperwork. And it's taken a lot of time for the applicant and for us, to the extent that we could give more time to the project opponent so that they could fully bat and make their legal arguments. That's what we tried to do. That's why we went beyond the seven days. You are on 120 day clock that exists for the benefit of the applicant, not for the benefit of us. I have already asked the applicant to extend that clock. They've agreed to, to December 30th. I think that Mr. Kovak anticipated something that the applicant has already raised, which is the needed housing argument, which is decisions have to be made on criteria. So clear and objective criteria. And that is why the, that is why the application's been set up. And that's why we required, required in the way of experts.
To go off of Counselor Miller's request of you going into the details of how this is unfolded, there was a comment made by their attorney that they were only allowed to give written response and not, sorry.
So.
Can you, sorry, it's late.
Yeah, so there are a couple of different ways that you can conduct a public hearing after the Planning Commission. And one is called on the record. And what that does is that it's the record that was in front of the Planning Commission. The legal arguments that were raised during the planning condition. A lot of people believe that that is the most fair way to do it because you don't have a gotcha moment at a hearing, have an opportunity for everyone to understand the arguments to be made. The other way that, one of the other ways that it could be done is what's called de novo, which is basically anything in the known universe. And that's usually what we would see for a legislative decision. So something that impacted the city as a whole versus a quasi judicial hearing based on one subdivision. So again, Oregon law provides for fixed time periods for applications and for us to process them. That's another reason why, usually for something like this, we would do it on record. Just to flag a couple of other things that were said, that we have a knowledge comprehensive plan. It was acknowledged by LCDC. It's our comprehensive plan until you change it. Changing it is not easy. You have to go through a tremendous process. There are other components of that, such as a transportation system plan and a parks master plan. It is not uncommon for those plans to have various options. So there might be 11 parcels that would be the size of what commonly be a city park. Those might all be identified in an aspirational plan as places where a park could exist if the zoning allows it. That could happen in R1 zone if people decided to make a park there. But our R1 zone allows housing.
Move to that rebuttal and then we can have the staff respond once they're done.
Sorry, do you feel good about?
If there's a procedural issue that we do need to address, then we need to address that procedural issue. If there's not, then we don't need, my concern is addressed.
Yeah, no, we noticed this as in on the record.
Okay.
We're doing this on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselors. So what this is going to be is essentially me responding to everything that I heard tonight and captured to the best of my ability and then kind of stepping back and looking at where we're at. It was actually really helpful to have Chris Kovak go near to last so I can remember clearly what he was raising. And I wanted to add just a couple of points to what Peter mentioned on the procedural issue. Because when he raised that for the first time tonight, I went and looked at the code. And the code clearly says that the city can decide how to scope a city council hearing of this type. It has done so. And I just want to reiterate that I understand that Mr. Haugen has been aware of this project for a long time. And he did not enlist Mr. Kovak until after the initial Planning Commission hearing, at which time I was presented with the question of would I allow 10 days instead of the normal seven? Or not allow, but support 10 days instead of the normal seven to allow Mr. Kovak to get up to speed, which I did. It's very, very clear in the code that city council can limit the scope of the hearing to issues that were raised before the Planning Commission. I understand that Mr. Kovak doesn't like that because he was engaged frankly quite late in the process. That's not the applicant's fault. And I think we've done everything to accommodate within reason the opportunity for him to raise arguments, which he did. And, you know, Chris is a good lawyer and his arguments were well-written and well-articulated. Needless to say, we didn't agree with them. The question about why we get to have final written argument is simple. We have the burden of proof. We're the applicant. And the way the system is set up is, you know, honestly, it may seem like the applicants hold all the cards here. But I got to tell you, that's not the case. It is very, very difficult to get land use projects approved in the state of Oregon. And one of the few things that we do get in, you know, essentially recognition that we have the burden of proof is the last word. And, you know, this is not the first group of people in the first city that has said, we don't like that. But that's what the law is in Oregon. And we think it makes sense and we're going to have our last word. But in terms of a procedural objection, the other component to a procedural objection is you need to explain how you're prejudiced. In this case, we took extra steps to make sure that Mr. Kovak had time to draft his written testimony, which he did. There's no doubt that the city can limit the testimony to issues raised before the Planning Commission. He might not like that, but I'm not clear how his rights were prejudiced within the confines of the process that was clearly noticed in the public notices. So, so I don't think that there's a procedural error, certainly not one that justifies reopening the record. The other thing, before I move on from that, is that the code requires an open record period only for the initial evidentiary hearing. In this case, the initial evidentiary hearing was before the Planning Commission and that request was granted, as Peter mentioned. Okay, so I want to step back a little bit and talk about some of the major concerns that we heard. And I think, you know, if I were to bundle these two concerns into different buckets, I would say that they really center on two main themes. Number one is density and growth. I actually heard more about density and growth during this hearing than I did about the flood concerns. And certainly the flood concerns were top of mind during the Planning Commission proceedings. And I actually disagree with some of the comments that said that the Planning Commission gave the short shrift. Maybe the Planning Commission did not ask the questions they would have asked. But I thought that the Planning Commission actually asked some very hard questions. And we answered those in the course of two hearings and substantial written testimony. So I don't, you know, I get it, you know, maybe if I'm sitting in the pews and I don't like what the preacher's saying, I'd, you know, tell you guys that. But I think fairly, Planning Commission did a good job with this one. And, you know, the issues about livability and density. I mean, I'll just take density on really, really quickly. I started my presentation with a brief mention of density. In this case, if we were to develop the property just under the existing zoning, no exotic land use approvals, no plan development, nothing. What you'd end up with is a maximum density of 46 homes. We're proposing 48. And a lot of the concerns that I heard tonight have to do with lot sizes. Lot sizes are small because we want to allow for preservation of the remainder of the site for open space. Sorry, is that?
No, that's, please got their phone on. Please make sure your phones are off or on mute.
I apologize. And so this is not a question of where we're taking advantage of a code that allows us to do something extreme with density. The lots sizes are smaller because we need to cluster the development away from the creek. It's as simple as that. I understand that people don't like lot, small lot sizes. I hear it all the time. But in this case, it has an important function. It has an ecological function, has a floodplain management function. And when you actually look at the site, if you're going to develop it at all, that's really what you have to do to make it work. And, you know, a lot of people raise concerns about, oh, this is not an affordable housing project. It's not an affordable housing project. We've never marketed it as such. We've marketed it as a single family project that can be affordable to more people. Affordable housing has a very specific meaning, at least in land use. And it typically means that you're limiting the purchase price artificially, what you can sell. That's not what we're doing here. Let me, one thing that I'll observe is that when you have smaller lots, and especially when you have a variety of lot sizes, it allows you to build homes that are affordable to a wider variety of people. Whether that's true in the case of every single, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm getting interrupted.
So, yeah, there's no outbursts, please.
So whether that's true of every single home is not really the issue. But I can say that on balance, if you have a wider range of lot sizes, you're going to have a wider range of home sizes and those are going to command a wider range of prices. But at the end of the day, when it comes to the size of the homes and the price of the homes, those are not criteria that are in your code that we are responding to. There's no requirement in your code that they be limited to a certain price or be a certain style. We understand that folks that live in the neighborhood want to see houses at a certain price and a certain style. That's not, that's simply not something that the city regulates. As far as the concerns about flooding, I didn't really hear anything tonight that we did not address at length during the Planning Commission proceedings. But I'll just kind of go through what our response is. The city has, as I mentioned at the beginning of this hearing, a very robust floodplain management program. It's not robust enough for the folks that don't like this project. I will freely state that. But in terms of the code, when you compare it to other cities, it's a lot harder to meet. It was a lot harder for us to meet and we did a lot of work to make sure we could. In this instance, we obtained a conditional letter of map revision before the application was even complete. And as I mentioned before, normally that's a condition of approval. So here we have FEMA going on record saying, if you build it like this, this is what that floodplain level is going to look like. And then the final letter of map revision comes through essentially the process of an ASBIL, where you show them what you've built, you go out and measure it, and then you submit that information to FEMA and then they change the map. We heard a lot of stuff during the Planning Commission hearing and tonight about concerns about global warming, atmospheric rivers, all of this sort of stuff. Those are absolutely valid concerns and they are absolutely not embraced in your development code. FEMA standards that, on which that they base their maps, those are not, there is no development code that the city has that requires us to go in and second guess that or even allows it. The city's development code basically says in 18, excuse me, 17.84.03.0 sub B is that the city recognizes the maps produced by FEMA. And that leads to a broader issue here. This is not time and it's not the process by which we change the code. When I was in planning school a long time ago, had a professor that said there's really two functions to planning. There's the comprehensive legislative function and then there is the implementation phase. What I heard a lot of tonight was concern about what the city's code does and does not allow. This is not the venue in which to change the city's code or to decide that it allows more than you would like it to. One of the things that we have in Oregon that is a quid pro quo in our land use system is the ability to use property if we own it based on the standards in place when we make an application. And whether or not there needs to be regulations governing how we analyze a 500-year flood event or regulations, how we do a number of other things, including looking at global warming and scoping the size of the, you know, of the watershed analysis we do. Those are all extremely valid questions and I don't bemoan anybody from raising them. But I just want to be clear that those questions are not before you tonight. What's before you tonight is whether or not the application meets the criteria. And the, you know, the record is, you know, I want to, I want to be careful in how I say this, but also very strong in how I say it. The record is very, very uniform in this question of whether or not floodplain is going to change in the way that the code requires it to be changed and in the way that FEMA has found that it will be. We actually had, in addition to our own consultant, there was another hydrologist that testified during this hearing, excuse me, not during this hearing, but during the Planning Commission hearing named John Archibald. And he was enlisted by the opponents to opine on our application. And what he said is that, and I'm roughly quoting him, "Development in and around floodplains can be done safely." He also said, "The project that we are proposing is not irresponsible." And he said that it meets all local, state and federal regulations. So I do not envy you your task, City Council. This is not a popular project with the people sitting behind me. That's not how we make land use decisions in Oregon. And I think one of the concerns I have, and I heard it a number of times and all, but I'll just sort of quote one person who raised this. One of the concerns was, let's see here, are you with me here? I think it was Ms. Walz, Christine Walz. And I'm picking on her not because of what she said specifically, but I think it's representative of what a lot of folks said. And I think what she basically said is, yeah, this project might meet the code, but you have to decide whether or not this is good for the community. And I respectfully disagree. Question before you, whether it meets your codes. This is not a legislative hearing. And I don't pretend that that's a hard thing for you to do. You're looking at your neighbors, you're looking at your voters, you're looking at people who mean something to you. I am just a lawyer working for an applicant. I mean nothing. But I have to tell you that the hardest job and the most important job that a city council will do is, in this instance, in a quasi judicial capacity, put those concerns aside, to put aside the political concerns and look at the application, look at what the codes require and make a decision based on those codes. I actually have a lot of confidence in you that you'll be able to do that. But I just wanted to point out that this is not easy. If it were a popularity contest, we'd lose every time. I'd lose every time in almost every city. And if I can indulge in just a really, really quick anecdote. My entire family, at least on my mother's side, has lived in Scapoose since 1978. Spent, I lived out here twice at two different times in my life. And I worked out here every summer until I was 22 years old. And there's a, if you, if you know where Laurel Street is, actually just down river from here, there's a small subdivision that was built, I believe, 1995, 1996. And when I was a kid, I used to spend the summers, my great grandma, who lived in a duplex right across there, duplex is still there. And I remember playing in that field. There were cows in that field and I loved it. I used to shoot at crows with BB guns. I was in hog heaven. One day, somebody came, horned it all off, started laying roads in there. And I was not a happy camper about it. That was my little playground and I enjoyed it. But over the years, what I saw in that little area, and incidentally, it's the same situation here. It was in a floodplain. They elevated it. It's out of the floodplain. That's, if you look at the floodplain map, it's clear as day what they did. But what I saw then, over the years, is families, kids, whole community growing up in that space. And I don't harbor any ill will against it or any frustration that I did when I was 12 years old. And I think about the opportunities that building that project gave those folks. This is not rural land. This is city land. It was zoned for residential development and that's what ought to be going in there. If the city wants to look at different options, legislative options, it's fair game. But today you have one of the most exhaustively analyzed and highly designed projects that I frankly have ever seen. And so, you know, I, the volume of oral testimony tonight, you don't want me to respond to everything because we'd be here for another two hours. But I just want to say that I understand where folks are coming from. And I don't begrudge them for that opinion a bit. This is hard. Scapoose has changed a lot since I was a kid. And when my kids are older, they'll look at it and say it's changed a lot since they were a kid. But in this instance, you have an application that meets all the development criteria. This applicant has gone above and beyond to reserve more of the site than it needed to for open space. And I also think, and what I've seen, is that after you build a project like this and people get used to the amenities that are in there, they start to like it an awful lot. It becomes part of the community. Folks that live there in the future will become friends, I hope, with the people that live around them. And I know that the folks that live around them, assuming we can build this, once the five stages of grief are over, will be welcoming neighbors and I anticipate they will be. So, you know, I heard a lot about concerns about livability, but I didn't hear a lot about why the application doesn't meet the criteria. And I'm asking you to do a hard thing tonight to look your friends and neighbors in the eye and say, I have a duty as a city councilor in a quasi judicial capacity to vote on the criteria. And I think if you do that, you can approve the project. So I really appreciate you hanging in with us, allowing us to present to you tonight. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Do you have anything?
Got it.
Okay. And is there any questions by counsel?
Yeah, Matt Sprague again with Pioneer Design Group. There seems to be a little bit of misunderstanding because when, it's mentioned that the homes in this subdivision are not going to flood. There is some backlash in the audience. I'm just not sure that they're fully understanding that what we are doing here is filling in areas of the floodplain where the development is occurring. If you look at your packet, you have a cut fill analysis sheet. And it indicates on that sheet where those fills are occurring and then also where the cuts are occurring. Most of the areas that are being filled carry backwater which is six inches deep. We're filling very little in terms of volume in those areas, even though it looks like a large area. And then we're cutting an equal or greater amount actually by nine cubic yards west of the development, or east of the development site towards the creek to balance that. It was also characterized that the study was just a cut fill study and that you shouldn't approve it based on something like that. Well, this was not just a cut fill study. It was a detailed hydraulic analysis of this drainage from way downstream to way upstream with surveyed cross-sections put into a computer model that is extremely, I was, I was actually amazed. One of the signs that you see being held up tonight shows a floodplain or shows a flood event. And if you had the bigger picture and you looked at that, it's amazing how that looks exactly like what the flood study was showing. Originally, we did a LOMER, a letter of map revision, before we even got rolling with the submittal to the city. Because there were so many changes to the floodplain due to other projects in the last five, 10 years that we reanalyzed the floodplain to provide an accurate view of what is going on out there today. As a result, many, many properties actually were removed from the floodplain and should talk to their lenders about removing their floodplain insurance responsibilities. We pointed some of those properties out in the Planning Commission hearing. But that letter of map revision was the first study. Then we did the conditional letter of map revision for our grading, which brings all of our homes out of the floodplain and makes adjustments to the floodplain. And we'll follow that up in the end with a letter of map revision to finalize the work that's been completed out there. There was some concern about fire access. I worked with Mr. Pritchard over a three-year period talking about different issues associated with fire access. We're sprinkling all of the units. We agree that, well, although it's not a requirement that you can't have a turnaround in an easement, he had a very good argument that was substantial enough for me to say, yeah, you're right. Let's put this in a tract. So we're complying with and agreeing with everything that Mr. Pritchard has stated about his needs for fire and fire protection and safety. What is complementary? I think complementary is not that you have all 6,000 square foot lots throughout the entire city. I think different lot sizes, different house sizes, different house prices, all of those complement the city as a whole. So I don't necessarily agree that this project is not complementary with the community of Scapoose and that it provides a housing opportunity that is actually underrepresented in the city itself. So it is very. So it is very complementary, and it does provide a more affordable housing option for people within the community. I also heard that we were impacting natural resources, or there was concern. We aren't impacting wetlands. We have riparian buffers out there, which primarily today consist of pasture. Very, very poor-conditioned riparian areas. With development of this project, all of those riparian areas will be substantially improved, and the end result is an enhanced wildlife habitat and resource area within all of the open spaces along the creek. Mr. Hogg mentions compatibility. We have higher-density zoning districts on one side, and we have lower-density zoning districts on the other side. We have purposefully, to be compatible, put larger, single-family home sites along our western boundary to be compatible with those home sites to the west. And then we have moved our higher-density housing to the center portion of the site, so then across the creek on the other side is, we're kind of a medium density, and there are higher density farther on the other side of the creek. So I think that we're very compatible with the neighborhood and the way we've designed this project. That's all I have for now, unless you have any questions.
Questions?
Not for them.
No. Thank you very much. Or did you have a question?
Well, I just have a lot of questions, actually, but I appreciate everybody's testimony. And I just want to clarify with Peter, our attorney, what our role here is. As I understand it, that our role regarding this requested zone change, that we're to approve or not approve what the developer has already submitted, which has already been approved by the city staff and the planning commission. And we're just basically affirming what they've already done. We're not seeing anything that they've done wrong, and our job is simply to affirm, already been cited for us by the staff in the planning commission.
Your job is to look at the record and to weigh the evidence, and to look at the criteria that have been identified, and to make a determination about whether they've met the criteria, the clear and objective criteria in our code. And so, I think that one of the challenges with this is that sometimes, some of the arguments we've heard aren't related to the criteria. They're related to maybe best practices somewhere else, or what could happen. And, you know, our code is our code. The way that Oregon's robust land system is set up, it's that somebody that's never been to the city would look at the criteria in our code and understand what they can and can't do, and submit, well, they do a pre-op and then they do an application, and then if they met the criteria in our code, then generally, that would be approved. And if they didn't meet the criteria in our code, then it wouldn't. To the extent that you have, I guess what I term dueling experts, so you, in some projects, you might have a traffic engineer that says one thing, and the others, and there might be a traffic engineer that says something else, you would weigh that testimony, and to the extent that you found one expert more compelling than the other, you would articulate why, so that we could all understand how you're right. But if the question is, can we base the decision on something other than the criteria? If you believe there's criteria that applies, that wasn't identified by staff, which I haven't heard so far, you would need to articulate that, it would be dealt with. To the extent that you believe that staff has identified all the criteria, and you're simply applying facts and record and evidence, make that determination.
Basically, you're saying what I said is what we're supposed to do. Now, what if there's something that we've heard, we think should have been considered? I didn't hear any rebuttal regarding the east side of the creek. If we put that wall up, and about those properties on the east side of the creek might be flooded because of our wall, is that ever been considered by you guys?
So what you heard is testimony about what that would do, the 500-year floodplain, which is not regulated by the city.
You said 500 and 100.
Well, we know, so the 100-year floodplain works with that wall. That's clear in FEMA's response to our request for a LOMER. The city does not regulate, and neither does FEMA, by the way, regulate specifically 500-year flood events or floodplains. So I did make some notes about that. I think what I heard, and it was not something that was, the 500-year floodplain issue was not something that was raised by any of the opponents during the planning commission review. And I think appropriate so, because the city doesn't regulate that level of flood event. But I did make some notes about it, and what I heard frankly was a lot of speculation. You know, there was a lot of concern about the fact that we used a lot of expert testimony to establish our record in this application. You're right, we did, because the city's code is very complicated. It requires a lot of information. As Matt told you, the computational tools we use to determine how floodplains work and they don't work, depending on how much you fill them or don't, and how much you balance that fill, are very, very complicated. And if I were to sit there and say, I know how it works, Garrett, the lawyer guy, can tell you all about the floodplain, you wouldn't believe me at all. That's why we have West Consulting. That's why we have hydrologists to make sense out of those things and to do the analysis. What I think is remarkable about this case, and what I don't typically see, is the extent to which there was a lot of back and forth between the city and the applicant and FEMA. And if you look at the record in that big package of material, you'll see a ton of stuff that happened much earlier this year. A lot of back and forth where Lori raised a number of questions that were frankly good questions and sometimes bothersome to us, because, gosh, we feel like we've done everything. But Lori kept pushing and pushing and pushing, and FEMA kept pushing and pushing and pushing. And I think what you have is the result of all that back and forth. If you want to talk, you know, what I did, the concern, and I'm going back to concerns that were raised at the planning commission level. One of the concerns we heard was scouring, and I know that our guy from West, and I'm Eric, thank you, and I know Eric did a pint on that, so I'm happy to have Eric come up and talk a little bit about the effect of the wall, because it sounds like a good question that was raised tonight, and I think we ought to address it.
So in regard to the 100-year floodplain, and how that wall and all that fill will impact the properties on the other side of the creek, because there was a no-rise requirement, essentially saying that during the 100-year flood, there could be no increase in the 100-year water surface elevation, that means that there will be no increased flood on the other side of the creek due to the wall and due to the fill placed on the opposite side during the regulatory 100-year flood. See, regarding the potential for scour, I know some people raised up concerns about stream migration. Streams do migrate. It's part of a healthy stream. Now, when you have streams going through developed areas, that's why these buffer zones are really good ideas. This 50-foot buffer reinforced with additional vegetation that's being proposed in the area would help protect against some of the stream migration encroaching onto the proposed development. In reality, JP West Road kind of causes water to back up behind it. So it's kind of a big bathtub. There's not a lot of velocity in the creek, so we did look at the velocities from the hydraulic analysis.
You mean the speed of the water?
Yeah, the speed of the water, the average velocity.
There's not a lot of deep water either.
Right, right. It's backing up behind that bridge, and so the velocities are relatively fairly low in the 100-year flood. Nothing that would trigger a significant concern with scour, or, you know, the erosion of the proposed development and the retaining wall.
You're saying the person that mentioned the water going to the east side of the creek is mistaken?
I think he was about the 100-year. I can't speak about the 500-year, but the 100-year. Yeah, yeah, it was designed so that there would be no change in the floodplain boundary for the 100-year on the other side of the creek. That's correct.
So the consequence is if we don't vote for it? What happens there?
So, I'm sorry, Counselor, just a question, point of order for the mayor. And I just want to make sure, if anybody has additional questions for the applicant, now would be a good time. Counselor McQ, if you want to talk offline to the city staff, it might be time for us to sit down, but I'll leave that to the mayor's discretion.
I don't have any more questions for the applicant.
Neither do I. Do you have a staff response? Yes.
I also have questions for staff, though. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for your attention. Thanks for sticking with us, and I appreciate this hearing. Thanks.
So if you were to deny the application, then we would need you to make findings as to what criteria have not been met. I can't speculate on exactly how likely a Luba appeal would be, but it'd probably be pretty high. But it seems fairly high anyways. I mean, a lot of people are talking about Luba. So, yeah, no, ultimately, what we need from you, regardless of how you decide this, is just a lot of clarity in how you're arriving at that decision. To the extent that a criteria has not been met, that you articulate why you believe that, so that we have a very clear record.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion? Since we are focused and tasked here with deciding whether or not this meets criteria, and this is kind of a, Counselor McQ's point, is that I think that we, if there is a question about if something meets criteria or is criteria-based, then we ask, is this criteria-based or not? Just so that we have clarification on that. If our scope is purely criteria-based, then we need to be sure that any lingering questions that we have or thoughts is criteria-based or not.
Agreed. Thank you. All right, so I just wanted to take a minute to go over just some things that I heard, and just to clarify some points. Let's see, we did hear some comments in relation to, like, the capacity of schools, city infrastructure, police, and others, whether or not this proposal would burden any of the agencies. And then tied into that, we also heard someone say that the planning commission did not have copies of the agency comments and such. That is incorrect. All of the agency comments were included in the planning commission staff report as exhibits 28 through 37. The school district's comment was included as exhibit 31. This is the opportunity, then, for agencies to comment in opposition to the development or to comment on issues they see with capacity not being able to meet the need for the proposed development. The school district did not comment in opposition at all. In fact, I have heard that enrollment is actually slightly down. Next point I wanted to make, we heard Mr. Kobach state that the city could not have stormwater facilities in the floodplain. This is incorrect. 17.84.040B3 allows for installation, reconstruction, or improvement of underground utilities or roadway improvements in the existing floodplain. The grading plan is necessary to construct the proposed extension of Eggleston Lane, and the two stormwater detention ponds are necessary to treat stormwater runoff from the roads and are interrelated to the proposed roads that are permitted in the existing floodplain. The applicant's preliminary stormwater report clearly explains why the proposed catch basins are necessary to treat runoff from roadways, regardless of whether they treat some stormwater from homes. Additionally, 17.84.040B8 allows public works projects to be constructed in the floodplain, which are defined as projects that are necessary to enhance or maintain general public welfare. Such projects may include, but are not limited to, flood control structures, public buildings, city infrastructure, utilities, parks, and projects associated with resource protection. This definition does not state that public works projects must be completed by a public agency. The work associated with the stormwater ponds requires plans meeting the requirements of the Public Works Design Standards and a Public Works Permit to demonstrate compliance with the Public Works Design Standards and Scapoose Municipal Code. So these facilities are considered public, since they'll maintain the general public welfare by protecting the public from flooding conditions by capturing, detaining, and trading runoff from public streets. We do have examples of other projects around the city that are developed under the same conditions. Those can be found in Veterans Park, Chief Concombre Park, Mearsburg Plan Development, Johanna Subdivision, and the Creekside Apartments. Additionally, the city has a condition of approval that tracks CNG, the stormwater tracks, are subject to a public storm drainage easement. That's condition of approval number 35, the second bullet point under that table. The city does not have a public storm system in this region of the city, and so these facilities act as public infrastructure. Let's see, we heard from several of the neighbors that the city should utilize something other than the FEMA floodplain maps when reviewing the application. However, that would be a violation of Scapoose Development Code 17.84.030B, and that requires that we base our decisions on the adopted floodplain maps for the city, which are issued by FEMA. It does not say that we can evaluate the floodplain under any other criteria or mapping, including a future unknown condition. To do so would be a clear violation of our development code. We also heard testimony requesting that the applicant study the entire south Scapoose Creek watershed as part of their project, similar to a study undertaken by the Scapoose Drainage Improvement District on the east side of the town, and that's as part of their effort to recertify the dike. This was done on the east side of town because it's evaluating flood risk associated with the levy, which covers a large portion of county lands and a small portion of the city. This project seeks to revise a small portion of floodplain boundary on one distinct parcel. The applicant completed an in-depth analysis of this revision, which extended 1,500 feet downstream of JP West Road and 2,200 feet upstream of EM Watts Road. This analysis is required to ensure that the base flood elevation on not just the project site, but also upstream and downstream of the project will not increase. Again, the project results in no rise to the base flood elevation, which is required by our development code. Related to traffic, so we heard from neighbors that traffic's going to become an issue with the addition of 48 new homes. And I will just say that our transportation system plan accounted for this property being developed with homes. Those trips are accounted for in the transportation system plan. The applicant was required to complete a traffic study, which they did, that follows the city's traffic impact study guidelines. They did that. The study was completed, which determined that all study intersections are meeting their respective performance measures and mobility targets today and after-site build-out conditions. There are specified measures that have to be met, and they were met. The city then cannot ask for off-site improvements related to the project, as some comments have suggested, since there would not be data to support the request, and it would be considered a taking from the applicant, which would be a basis for appeal. Related to compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods, again, we heard that a few different times, that this would not be compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. The Scapoose Development Code states, in relation to compatibility, "The plan development shall present an organized arrangement of buildings, facilities, open spaces, and improvements, such as recreation facilities, landscaping, and fencing, to ensure compatibility with the comprehensive plan in the area in which it is to be located." This application proposes all of the amenities mentioned above, and this site is adjacent to three different zoning districts, the R1 low-density, the R4 moderate-density, and the A1 high-density district along its southeastern border. The R1 zoning district, then, is not the sole zoning district to use as the basis for compatibility. Further, the city has previously approved plan developments with lot sizes ranging from 2,600 and 2,660 square feet to 10,210, to, to, to 10,210 square feet as recently as 2015. And that, in that development, which was South Fork, um, the council approved it with side setbacks of three feet. Whereas this proposal involves lot sizes from 3,410 square feet up to 13,083 square feet, and side setbacks are proposed at five feet for internal lots and ten, and eight feet for street-side setbacks. So again, this development is utilizing the planned development overlay because there are natural resources to protect on the site. Again, that is the main purpose of this overlay. Uh, again, the applicant is proposing single-family detached homes, which are compatible with the majority of surrounding developments with the exception of the apartment complex in the southeast corner of the site. I think that concludes kind of, um, some of the observations I saw. I don't know if you had anything else. We want to wait for questions.
Okay. Yes. Page thirty and thirty-one, Chapter seventeen point four four R1 Low Density Residential. Sorry, thirty and thirty-one. The subject site is Zoned R1 Low Density Residential, and the applicant proposes an average lot size of 4,917 square feet, which is an average lot size reduction of 18% below 6,000 square feet is allowed through the planned development provisions. The applicant's requested dimensional requirements are summarized in the third column here. In the first row, first column, dimensional requirements, minimum lot area, single-family detached. First row, second column, our requirement is 6,000 square feet outside the Scapoose Creek floodplain and 20,000 square feet when a structure is located in the Scapoose Creek floodplain. Proposed by the, um, planned development overlay is a minimum of 3,410 square feet, no residences within the special flood hazard area, which would require FEMA approval in Phase Two. And then again, the minimum lot width. So now I'm in the second row, first column. Um, I just want to look at those four boxes. If you could make any sort of clarifications, that would be great.
Just in the comparison between the two?
So our requirement is in the second column, correct?
This is for a standard R1 zoning district. So the planned development overlay allows for changes to the base zoning, which the applicant has requested, and that's to allow for the clustering of housing away from the natural resource.
So my feeling about that? Or my finding or my opinion is, um, that then there would need to be less homes.
In other words, you're saying you don't agree with the, um, changes in that it would just be the R1 standard is what you're saying?
Not willing to compromise that, no. Yes.
Okay, and so, um, what we would need then is the rationale or reasoning for not granting the reduced, the proposed PD overlay standards?
Can I ask a follow-up question? Uh, in regards to that, um, what is the, what is our standard for, um, approving a, uh, planned development overlay?
What is our sta, so, uh, tonight you would be looking at this and, uh, approving the tentative plat approval. Um, once that was done, then the final plat approval would come back to, um, the city, to Chris and I to review. And what we're looking at then is, um, to make sure that it's meeting all the conditions of approval, um, whatever's included, um, and that it's also meeting FEMA's letter of map revision has been issued before we would sign off.
I think my question's more about the, the overlay, though, for the planned development side.
How do we decide?
How do, yeah, how does?
What's the criteria for deciding if?
Gotcha.
Gotcha, hang on. Thank you.
In Chapter seventeen point eight one. It's, um, starts on the bottom of page thirty-nine. Approval criteria. An application may be approved, approved with conditions, or denied based upon substantial conformance with the following criteria. The proposed development complies with the comprehensive land use plan and is compatible with the surrounding area or its proposed future use. A.
Sorry, you said page thirty-nine?
Yep, and now I just flipped to forty. Sorry. Yeah, I was at the very bottom, sorry. So that was A, I just read. Do you, do you see that? It's, uh, page forty, bottom right, or I'm sorry, bottom left number. Correct. So that was A. B is that exceptions from the standards of the underlying district are warranted by the design and amenities such as usable common open space, cluster development, et cetera. C is that the proposal includes designs and construction standards and compliance with city code and that all completed infrastructure be approved by the city and ownership of all infrastructure and public utilities deeded to the city upon completion. D, that the development can be designed so as to provide for adequate access to an efficient provision of services to adjoining parcels. E is that streets are adequate to support anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area, as supported when necessary by a formal traffic impact analysis. F, that proposed utility and drainage facilities are adequate for the population densities and type, excuse me, and type of development proposed. G, that the proposed development can be substantially completed within a reasonable period of time. So those are your criteria for the overlay.
I have a question.
Yes.
If they weren't doing the overlay, I just came in, an R1 zoned property, they could build 46 homes on this property, approximately, because you don't have to, nothing in the code or any code says that the property line has to be squared up or anything. I think we saw that on county five-acre lots up at Bridgeway where the houses are on five-acre lots. Only a small section across the road. Five acres shoots all the way down. So the 46 lots would be on larger sites, but would lose the open space, packed a trail.
So because, though, there's, there's resources on site that have protections around them, like buffers, there's really not, um, if they're going to maintain 6,000 square feet, then it just means fewer lots, right? They're still having to protect the resources. That doesn't go away.
Yeah, but there's nothing that says that that property, when you're designing those 6,000 square feet lots, because it's going to take up much more space.
Sure.
There's nothing in the code that says that each individual property owner can't have a slice all the way down to the edge of the creek like it's on the other side have to make that 6,000 square feet.
So he's, he's suggesting they could do aerially shaped lots and then use a conservation easement or other function in order to protect the?
And that's basically what they're saying, is why we're using them.
It's, it's harder, it's harder to protect the natural resource if it's not in a tract that's separate from private property.
That's my point.
Yeah. Definitely harder to do.
Go ahead, Pete.
Go back, can't you, the, the traffic study addressed the pedestrians crossing from the development to Veterans Park?
Yeah, in fact, I believe there's proposed crosswalks that the applicant would be adding to make that a safer route across.
Be a crosswalk. What about reduction in speed, uh, or anything along there? I'm on the Traffic Safety Committee and it'd be nice to, I think, Safety Committee, but I understand we're running time crunch too, so.
So all the local roads, um, like that are already under, um, default speed at 25 miles per hour, and so, um, I believe there is some signage on JP West. Probably not, uh, as you go up the hill, but I think, I think there is some down there. I'd have to, I'd have to verify that. They are also proposing to meet the Public Works Design Standards with regard to pedestrian, ADA connectivity, and that's to have ADA, uh, striping across JP West at both curb returns as well as across the throat of the subdivision.
Dirty, uh, I know like some places you go, like West Union, other places, they've got pedestrians have to push a button and you get a sign that lights up, you know, and, is there any, to me, that could be a very dangerous intersection. There'll probably be about 60 or 70 kids in that development, figuring correctly, one and a half kids per household or something like that. Uh, so it's crossing, I mean, if I was a kid, I'd be in and out of that park all the time. I'm just thinking, once you get comfortable with it, you just dart across it, you know? That's, yes, I'm just concerned that it's, I know it maybe isn't anything that hasn't been addressed, but I just wonder if it's been properly addressed.
I think, Pete, we have to go back to the criteria and if we, we have to come up with?
Yeah, I do understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. So obviously we vote yes.
I, I think just to answer your question, though, quickly, is that we would have, we would have recommended, um, uh, RFBs at that location, um, flashing beacon signs, uh, similar to what we have, I don't have, like, had it been recommended by their traffic engineer based on those types of trips, um, it wasn't there. And, um, so it was hard to support that in our, our findings and our recommendations.
A similar problem in front, on, on High School Way in Scapoose. We had two children, kids hit there years ago. I mean, and what we did was put a stop sign there, plus they raised the crosswalk, so it's a little higher, less to slow down for that.
I, I think it's a valid concern. I, I don't, um, I don't, I don't know that there's a specific study to show pedestrian trips related to this project, and so, you know, I, I would, I would have, you know, I'd, I'd want to have the applicant respond to those concerns specifically, because there's no engineering, uh, to my knowledge, that supports that. But perhaps there was some analysis that I'm not aware of. Uh, Lori or Chris was there?
Jeanette. Yes, thank you. Um, so, and I'm tired and I'm sure everybody is tired, and it's really hard to make a decision when you're exhausted and you've been in a meeting for four hours. So, um, just as counsel, I, I think, I feel, you know, I know that we're supposed to go by code and criteria, but as counsel, I feel that we have the responsibility, follow the city and the mission and our vision, and I know that we need housing, but we need also quality and livable housing, right? So with that being said, um, you know, I know that, um, that it, to me, it doesn't make sense, and I haven't seen that it makes total sense. I have more questions than, than we have time today, um, that there's going to be 48 units and there's not going to be a flooding, uh, issue. You know, I'm looking at a, um, at a statistic here from Source of Governing Analysis and Standard USA Census, that it says that US prone, prone growth, that it's calculated and estimated that shows that FEMA designated 100-year planes are expecting slightly, slightly faster growth, and it's growing each decade. So I know what FEMA says or what FEMA doesn't say, but it's flooding is obviously going to be an issue. It's flooding an issue which is going to affect the how, uh, the, the, our current residents and our future residents. And so I am not comfortable approving that, approving what I've heard and what I've read of approving this application, and that's, that's my thoughts. And I know that you're looking for a criteria or whatever, but if I can get the help of, um, um, I mean, of the, uh, city planner, that I, I really don't see the, um, I know there's, you guys gave information and facts and, and studies, but I'm looking at other studies too, that it says that it can, you know, whatever studies say, it's actually underrated, it can actually be more than.
And, Peter? Respectfully, Counselor, you can't make your decision based on evidence that's not in the record. So this, this, this decision is being made based on the evidence in the record, and so if it's, now you, you've got your folder, which I, you know, 500-plus pages, um, and so we can't.
Yes, I put down the.
If this were a legislative, if this were a legislative proceeding, then you could make your decision based on things outside of the record, but this is quasi-judicial, so you're acting like a judge.
Right, and we just, I mean, it's, um, for me, I know that, uh, staff and the applicant have been working at it for four years, but it's, um, a lot of information to, to take on even for a week or two weeks, and, and then, um, and then all the testimonials that we're hearing, the information, it's, it's a lot. And I, I'm not, I, I'm talking personally here, I'm, and I know that's probably not criteria or code, but I'm not comfortable of making a decision on a four-hour meeting and all the information given all at once. That's just by two cents.
Okay. I mean, I, I know that, that not everyone might agree with the rules, but like, the rules are, when you're sitting in a quasi-judicial hearing, you're making a decision based on the evidence in the record and the criteria. And to the extent that there's evidence that you're making a decision based on anything other than evidence in the record and the criteria, then what's going to happen if it gets appealed is it's going to get remanded with the instruction that you need to make your decision based on the evidence in the record and the criteria. And that is just how it works.
I understand that, Peter, thank you, but it's just that we had no say, the council had no say on the evidence of the criteria that's on record.
Pete, yeah, that's part of code.
And, and, and that's what you're making us, uh, decide on something that we have no pardon.
Lauren?
So, Jeanette, there's a time to create the code, and then there's a time to apply the code. So every land use application has to be decided based on the criteria that's in the code when the application was submitted. So that's what we have to work with here. We're looking at the application based on the criteria in the development code, and in order to then deny the application, we need to hear specifically what criteria is not being met.
And it's actually anticipated that some cities, upon receiving an application, might then decide to change their code, which is why there's a rule that is referred to as the fixed goalpost rule, which is that whatever the code and criteria are when the application is submitted, and that is the criteria that the applicant is entitled to rely upon for the purposes of their application to prevent, um, a situation where because somebody doesn't like a code, they would then, or a project, they would then change their code to prevent it. And, and that rule is, the fixed goalpost rule is very clear.
So, Mr. Mayor, moving forward, I'd like to go back to some evidence here. How much time do we want to spend on this or extend this?
We can do, we can do one of a couple of things. Posing, if the staff response is done, we can close the hearing. That's when it's, for us, our consideration, but we can, we can still make changes. That's when we get to make changes. We decide, say we decide we want to turn it down, then we have to, that's when we're start building this record or the reason.
Respond to that?
I mean, you can, you can. I mean, you can, you can close the hearing and begin debating amongst yourselves as far as whether the criteria has been met. If some people have said that they're getting tired, so we already have a second. We already have a, a meeting on next Monday set. We would need then, we would need to reserve the 19th as well. But the good news is we're on a public hearing, so and the, the 12th has already been noticed. So, but yeah. And then we'd be going to a fixed date, which would be the 19th. So you're, it's your call. I mean, you can continue on this evening.
Well, there, there's that option where we just recognize that it's going to take two more meetings. There's nothing else on the, the next agenda, the 12th, except for this or. So the other option is to put it on first reading, have the debate, because that can be amended during the time of the next meeting.
Well, you can, you can debate, you can have the conversations regarding whether you believe that the criteria has been met or not met and make it a, make a decision this evening. They're accepting, they're approving or rejecting it. As far as doing first reading, I mean, you'd need to make the decision in order to do the first reading.
Whether to move forward.
Oh, whether you want to move forward or not, I think would be.
What I mean is once the motion's on the floor, so once a motion is made, it goes on first reading. The second reading is when the vote will happen. That's either going to be in one week or in two weeks, depending on whether or not the first reading is done tonight or if it's done next month.
Yeah. And the other thing too, is that if you're going to debate tonight and come up with findings for denial, then staff might need time, you know, you might need to direct staff to potentially draft findings. So whether that occurs tonight or whether that occurs on the 12th.
All right. So on page 33, the finding is that again, the applicant has requested reductions to dimensional standards as previously summarized in the section, I think it was on page 30 and 31. So again, we're going into them requesting a reduction in dimensional standards. This is something that I don't feel comfortable with. So I'm needing help finding wording that somehow makes a case that we're not going to compromise on our standards in terms of a lot size. I understand that setbacks and, you know, front yards and, and widths and all these other things. In most cases, they're being compromised on. It's not necessarily just the lot size. And I understand that it has to do with the preservation of the land.
And so there's a.
However, I don't want to compromise that.
So there's a criteria that directly relates to that and it's.
I think I circled.
Yes, page 40B.
Yep. I circled it.
Okay. So this is where it would lie as far as, you know, you sticking to that, that thing you don't want to compromise on. That exceptions from the standards of the underlying district are warranted by the design and amenities such as usable common open space cluster development, et cetera. So how I interpret that or think about that is that, as we heard tonight, 57% of the lot is left as open space to protect the natural resources. You know, it also says warranted by the design. So I, I guess we would need to hear from you how you feel the design or the usable common open space or the cluster development is not enough to grant those reductions.
I have a lot of reasons, but I don't know if they're, they would withstand anything.
Okay.
Should I just take it away?
Yeah. I mean, this, this, yeah, yeah.
You're with me. No clue what I'm doing here. All right. So I, one thing has to do with a parking requirement. There's two spots per, per residence, correct?
Uh, as a requirement in our code. That's correct. And garages count.
And the garage counts and the driveway would be the second, correct?
Um, I believe in their plan, they have two spaces in the driveway in addition to the garage.
So technically they're counting that as three.
Or four even if it's a two-car garage.
Okay. I mean, I technically have a three-car garage, but one vehicle. So that doesn't stand. So then, so then is there parking on both sides of the street?
Yes.
So that still leaves room, Chris, to meet a two-way? And the turnaround is at the cul-de-sac at the end.
There's a designated turnaround. Uh, I don't know what the tract is, but it's specific.
The track, sorry.
It's specific for the fire truck.
Right.
So that it'll be maintained, uh, as an easement on a lot, but it'll be, uh, the HOA will maintain that tract to be, and enforce that it's left open and there's appropriate signage there.
I wish we had like an environmentalist on staff.
And then just to address your on-street parking.
Yeah.
So it's a standard local street width that you would have in any subdivision in Scapoose. There's no compromise whatsoever to any of the public standards.
So is there a claim that we can make that more people clustered? If, if you set aside that they're preserving 57% of the land, which then would go ding, 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 okay, check that box. That's what I'm getting back here. That more people clustered in one location would have a higher negative environmental impact on land than if there were less people populating that space. So my claim is let's go back to our design standards and double the lot size and have half the homes. You have half the amount of people inhabiting land. Is the impact half negative impact to the environment in terms of just like runoff, garbage, pollution?
I mean, really, our codes sort of want efficiency of roads and utilities and things like that. So having, you know, I, I don't know specifically if clustering is going to have some sort of specific measurable impact that would be different than having 46 homes spread out in a different arrangement.
So I guess my take on this is I'm not willing to say that by preserving 57% of the land outweighs the livability of the lot in terms of size, but that's not going to stick.
Opinion?
I think what you're really asking is how many lots would the applicant potentially be willing to give up? Knowing that the answer might be zero. Uh, and that's not a question that I can.
I just think that we have gone through the process as a council, well, not maybe one, two, three, four of us probably, that when we did the housing needs analysis and we redid our code, we were very specific on lot sizes. And that, that means something to me.
Yeah. And indeed, absolutely. But we have always had this provision in the code for a planned development overlay that would allow to change that. And again, like we've said all night, you know, it's because of the parcel itself. It's because they're protecting the natural resources on site. So regardless of what our standards are for the R1, there is this provision in the code because there are odd parcels where, where this applies well. Again, the city has already set precedents, uh, future council or past councils have already set precedents that the city does allow planned developments. We have lot sizes smaller than these.
And I understand how that would all hold up in, in, in them coming back at us.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Laurie, I have a question. Can you remind me all these different, losing the correct words to say, I'm sorry. All these different, all the different criteria, thank you. Different criteria that has to be met. Did all of these things flow into the conditions?
Yes.
So every single one of these, so the parking, the, all these things that we're talking about that are important. It's all, okay, I thought, I thought I remember that, but I just wanted to clarify just to be sure.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I mean, from it, this is, this is, this is challenging because, I mean, from perspective, when you look, when you look at trying to figure out, you know, we have, we have, we have code in place that we have to follow. We have rules that we have to follow. And obviously, you know, a lot of all these, a lot of checkmark boxes have already been filled out. So I don't, for me, I need a little more time to really kind of scrutinize the, the wording. I don't really, you know, I don't, I don't, I want to make sure that we make a good decision on this process. And so I'm a little bit hesitant to say, hey, let's, let's just go ahead and move forward with this right now. When we have, we can push out and make one more meeting and make a little more time for us to make a smart decision. That's just my personal opinion though.
Laurie, is there a, it's like a formula you use to reduce the size of lots? Is that how that works?
No, there's a formula to reduce the size of the lots? No.
Reduced them to the size that they currently are with the overlay. But how do we go about determining what they're allowed to, size of lots?
So we don't have, there's nothing in there that says, um, there's a formula that they use to determine the size of the lots. They proposed that to us. Yeah.
There's no, that, there was no formula. They just looked at it.
No, I mean, there's a formula in so much as they have to look at their site and they have to take out the flood plain, the greenways, the wetlands, the things that can't be developed. They, they net that stuff out, the right-of-way dedication. They come up with a certain square footage divided by 6,000, which is the base zoning. And that gave them the 40, 46 units. So that's without any density adjustment. They requested a 4% increase to the 48 lots. So, but as far as like, how do, how do they determine the size of the lots they're proposing? That's not captured in our code.
They did cite the fact that it's near Veterans Park too, that they, more space there or whatever. And I kind of see that as a little bit of a hazard for the kids living in that.
I mean, again, there's no striped crosswalk there today. So it's going to be a very visual, there'll be two, one on each corner of the new street extension, both heading parallel to the north to, to Veterans Park. So that is always a major visual to a driver when they see that as a continental striping. That, that is a place to stop that people will be crossing.
Yeah, I understand that. Not sure it's a lot. Yeah, that's just.
Mayor? I, I think it's important to point out what's on the record because that's what's going to count here. And what's on the record and what the applicant has said repeatedly is the reason that they reduced the lot sizes to the sizes that they are is to preserve that area in between the nearest house and the creek. So I have a really hard time finding how we can object to their criteria or that it doesn't meet criteria when we have to consider what's on the record. And they have stated that repeatedly. I mean, that's, that's just the, I know that's not what some folks want to hear, but that is, we're at with this.
Right. I mean, what we don't want to have happen is this get appealed and sent back to the city, remanded and said, follow your own code. Because that means staff has to do this all over again. And when I say we've been working on this a long time, we've been working on this a long time. And it's because we needed to bring you an application that met the criteria. We couldn't have brought this to you any sooner because they weren't done with the work I asked them to do so that we could bring it to you. So this is what it takes and this is what it looks like. And it is a lot. It really is. But the evidence, in my opinion, is pretty clear and it's all here. It's in the record. Um, they have done everything we've asked them to do. And they pushed back and I pushed back harder. So, I mean, I think it's all here. But I do understand your reservation. I do understand the public's concern, of course. Um, anyone who's lived in the area has seen flooding on that property. And like the applicant said, a lot of it is quite shallow. It's like six inches to fill in certain areas of the flood plain. Um, and then they are filling beyond that as well. That's all been run through their model. They're, they're showing how, how that works with a no rise. Again, if the city did not have these higher standards, they could have filled. They wouldn't have had to compensate whatsoever by cutting as long as they weren't filling, you know, showing an increase by more than a foot. They would have been fine, but our code doesn't allow that. Our code is, contains higher standards. So, um, again, from staff's perspective, they've, they've met the criteria. But I am sympathetic towards your decision.
Think that we've been presented the evidence, we've heard testimony. It's on us to make our next decision. So ultimately, the decision, I think the first decision for council is we can either, A, go close the hearing, but then come back, do our considerations at the next meeting. Which means we went through the first reading until then and the second reading would be the 19th. That's what most of the council prefers. The other option, do the first reading, finish council questions, do the first reading tonight, come back, discuss it, the 12th, and then make any final decisions then. Those are really kind of the choices, given that you've got a December 30th. Got a December 30th deadline and multiple holidays between, and then the 30th. And remind me again, what happens if we don't make a decision by the 30th?
So just, just so that everyone is aware, if we do have the next meeting, it would be Monday, December 12th at 7:00 PM in this room, just for clarity purposes.
If we did have another one after that, it'd be December 19th.
Correct.
Seven o'clock in the.
That's correct.
I will be out next week, week of the 12th. You'll be on. Because it doesn't, I mean.
Can I ask a follow-up question? If we push this out and we're doing, I, what's our legal obligation on, on information? We are required to follow, I mean, only the information's here. Uh, I mean, I'm just ex parte going forward.
Yeah, there's ex parte contact and I hope there wouldn't be any, but you would need to disclose it and it needs to be based on the evidence in the record.
Just want to make sure that's kind of clear out there.
Yes, I can join via TV.
I'm not prepared to do a first read this evening.
Yeah, I would prefer to, even though I know it's more time and it's going to be more time from staff as well, I would prefer to at least give it a little more time so that.
So that we can.
Digest it.
So that we can digest it and that, um, now I don't, I, I'll be honest with you. I don't know if the decision's going to be anything different, but I would rather have a little more time to read through.
Be either way.
Good with waiting? Good with waiting? Jeanette?
I propose we wait for next meeting.
Okay. So what we'll do is the hearing's closed. This will just be.
Okay. Just wanted to check. The hearing is closed.
Is closed for consideration and the matter is now in council's hand. Is closed for consideration and the matter is now in council's hands. Eleven-thirty, so council will pick up this discussion on the seventh or on the twelfth at seven PM.
Okay, so we'll enter into deliberations or, I mean, basically staff's completed our comments, so, okay. Gotcha, just want to know where we're at, yep.
And then we'll be back on the seventh and then we, the nineteenth at seven o'clock.
Yep.
Assuming we get to a first reading, second rating. Otherwise, on the thirtieth, here, it's automatically approved. And I just want to make sure that people understand that, that it's automatically approved if we don't make a decision before that. It's eleven-thirty, if, uh, no one cares about doing away with the calendar or other updates.
No, good night.
No more, we're not going to do any calendar updates tonight on the next meeting. Uh, meeting adjourned.